Something's going on, you don't know about, I don't. I'm not sure.
Tenfold what? All right, lodge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for Richard Sands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Gerson.
Present.
Counselor Trask.
Present.
Counselor Gorley.
Present.
Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
As a record show of all seven present with no absent, at this time can you do the online live stream rules?
Thank you to everyone who is joining us. For members of the public who would like to participate in this meeting, we have some instructions to help you if you are new using Microsoft Teams. Notice the icons in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The second one from the left is a chat bubble icon indicated with the yellow arrow. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak, please choose the bubble icon to enter into the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. First, enter your name, address, and phone number in the chat, followed by the topic you wish to discuss. If you wish to speak at any point during the meeting, you can choose the hand icon also located in the upper right-hand corner. It is the equivalent of raising your hand. Then the mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone a few minutes now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council in the meeting chat. We will ask in the interest of time that people not repeat a previous speaker. Instead, state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or meeting chairperson per the council rules. The moderator will note those joining by phone for the mayor or chairperson. The fact that the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior. The mayor retains the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules.
Thanks Julie. At this time, directive of council consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. My roll call, please.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Record show of seven ayes, no nays, approval of the consent agenda. Before we get into recognition of visitors and hearing petitions, our city manager has a recognition this evening she would like to produce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So I want to thank all of staff and all of the volunteers and the community members who made the Harvest Festival such a success. It was really phenomenal and to see something of that caliber in a town of this size is truly exceptional and inspirational. So all of the staff did an absolutely fantastic job and it took a great deal of work to put this together. I had a fantastic time personally and everybody that I spoke to also had a wonderful time. So these were the types of events that is really exciting to see Sweet Home doing because it not only brings the community together, but it also showcases Sweet Home in a fantastic light and I think can continue to bring additional visitors and community members here. So seeing an event from like this from the outside, I know I would want to move here and so I'm not really happy that I already have or at least I'm in the process of doing so. But this event really could not have been done without the hard work of all the people who came together to create this event and to make this happen, including all of ourselves. And so a huge thank you to all of you and please join me in thanking everyone. There are two staff members in particular that we would like to recognize. So Sean Hagy and Angela Clegg, would you please stand up for me? Thank you. So, and I'm going to ask you to come back, come up here, but if you wanted to stand there for now, that's okay. And so just a little bit, so Sean made sure that Sankey Park looked absolutely beautiful and was well-maintained and in perfect order, as well as making sure that all the improvements were in place and he had his team there to make sure everything kept looking beautiful and that everything was provided for. And then Angela coordinated and planned the entire event, including all the signs and the banners and all the vendors set up organizing the bands and was truly the heart of the entire event. So they literally had to live and breathe this event for months and months, besides also maintaining all of their regular duties. So just want to say a huge thank you to both of them. And in the military, a challenge coin is provided for truly exceptional service. So if you both would come up and if y'all can join me in saying thank you, I'd like to point this to each of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelsey. And once again, thank you for the entire city staff and all their efforts for Harvest Festival. It was an excellent job. At this time, recognition of visitors and hearing petitions, anybody who'd like to come forth before or before council. Okay. Moving on to old business, information only, FAC managed outreach and community resource facility update.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council members. This has been a long time coming and it's still going to be quite a bit longer before it's opened, but there has been progress made on the site. By quite a bit longer, I don't mean, you know, a lot longer, but it's still not ready as I intend. There has been some progress made on the site. Fencing is, is all done except for the one side along the easement where the annex building will need to be brought through. The site is completely level. There is power to the site. We have an agreement in place with visitor power to provide, provide that power. FAC is working with the high school to complete even more huts than are already completed. And in the next couple of days, they should have a couple of those huts on site, which is good to finally get some of those huts there, move to the location. The annex building is, there is internal bracing in place, ready to move it. And they had a, I believe today, had a firm looking at it to see about moving it to the site. And so we're hoping that that will be successful and they will be able to do that within the next week. That's been really the real, the biggest delay for the whole project has been getting that annex building moved. Because if you are not aware, it is not a traditional manufactured building. It is a modular building and so there's no, no actual axles underneath it, which requires a specialized moving process. And then we, I believe we had some, we're continuing to support the school district and work with them to provide, to do photos and, and video of the site to put together another promotional video showcasing the students' talents and what the work that they've done, but also showing what the facility will be and, and whom it is intended to serve. Draft rules are in place for the site. The policy board will be contacted. I've been told to, for their inaugural meeting this week. So we look forward to them meeting and getting started. And so the city has basically fulfilled all that we have said we were going to do. We were continuing to support FAC as they move through the process. Work still remains obviously, but we're, we're getting there. So happy to take any questions that you might have and.
Any questions in council? Thank you, Blair. Now moving on to new business, RCA for Mountain Fur Right-of-Way dedication.
That's, that's me again. So we, we discussed this before, but we've gathered some more information for you regarding costs and what this, what this dedication would look like. Also Jeremy Sheldon Filterd from Mosaic, I hope I pronounced your name, your last name correctly, is here with us also and he can answer questions as well regarding their plans for the property and desire for further development on the eastern 27 acres. So just to review, the Mosaic is requesting that we take on the roadway for Mountain Fur Street and Mountain Fur Court. That, we've taken a look at the condition of the road and we've made some recommendations on what staff thinks needs to happen. That would include crack sealing it and a slurry coat before we take it on. And also we would need to have all of the utility lines that are underneath the roadway dedicated to the city along with the roadway. And then there are some utility lines that are outside of the roadway that are still main utility lines that would also need to be dedicated to the city. Because if you don't, it would result in a situation where you'd have a public line flowing into a private line, which then flows into a public line and it's not a great situation for maintenance. Public Works has taken a look at, at those lines and they are in great condition. There's no concerns with the condition of those lines. And Mosaic has indicated that they can abide by these requirements, that these are, are suitable. And I can, and if you'd like to come up, you're welcome to say a few words as well.
Good evening, Jeremy. Need name and address for the record.
Jeremy Shane Felder with Mosaic Development, address is 1900 Hind Street, Southeast Salem, Oregon. And as Blair mentioned here, to answer any questions on the road dedication for Mountain Fur. But he is correct. I guess I'll give a quick background as to the reasoning why. We have the 27 acres under contract to the east and we want to develop it into a subdivision. We're probably going to do some additional cottages similar to what's on the current site to the west and then some other single-family stuff. But in order to do that, you have to have public access and because that street is private, it precludes us from being able to subdivide it into something that we would think we would, we would want to develop. So that's the real nexus for, for the, for the request. And as Blair mentioned, you know, we talked about conditions with him and those are acceptable. There were a couple of questions we had relative to specific areas of the easements, but we were able to get with staff and, and come to a consensus on, on which ones needed to be included and not. And that was just the result of one of the addition we want to do on the assisted living piece. There's one piece of the storm water that's a little bit tight that we would probably be encroaching on the easement if we, if we had the easement go out to that one particular line. But if it stays private, then we kind of get around that and so.
Okay. I know the council members had questions, so at this time I'll open up questions.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion for personal reasons.
So my questions and concerns have been addressed with this. I couldn't understand what the value to your entity was that we would take it on and the long-term effects of doing that. So that's, that's what I was concerned. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. You said that you were going to subdivide and build residences. Do you have a estimated start date that you would like to do that?
We don't. I mean, we're so early on at this point. We haven't even done enough of a density study about what can fit on there. We're literally in the process of getting civil topographic maps and geological studies back to really know what is buildable. So we have a kind of an idea of what we do, but it would be single-family stuff. Again, probably not for sure at this point, but probably similar to what you see in the townhome scenario on the, what is that, the, the east side of the current property? And then some probably more traditional single-family with a little bit larger lots likely. But again, we don't know that until we really get all of our civil and geotech back to know really what's buildable. And we have to also work within the jurisdictional requirements relative to access and fire and life safety and all of that stuff as well.
So do you have an estimation on how long that process takes?
Generally, just going through the development portion is probably about a year. So we're probably at least a year before you would see any true activity. The rest is called paperwork. And then, then we wouldn't probably go fast and unfortunately, we don't know what this market is going to look like, you know, in the next, in the near future. So we'll be somewhat reactive to the market in that regard. But we'll get moving, you know, relatively quickly after we close as far as getting the legal entitlements done for that piece. And then we'll probably build it out. You never know again because of market, but we'll build it, build it out somewhat slowly. But again, if there's demand for single-family homes, if it continues like it was, we'll probably move a lot faster. I know that's not a great answer, but unfortunately with the way the market is, it's hard to really predict.
I'm just concerned that it might not be developable and we're owners of that street. The next question I have is, do you have a estimation on how much traffic increase is going to be on that road because of your business?
We haven't done a traffic study. Again, that would have to be done at the entitlement phase generally speaking. And the reason we haven't is because we don't have an idea of exactly what we can put on that yet. So we don't have the right data inputs to do a valid traffic study at this point. You know, just high level, I can't imagine that it's any more traffic than what the assisted living and memory care facilities would be bringing currently. In other words, I don't see it doubling to that street by any means. It's still really low impact because if you're talking single-family homes, not, you know, we're not going vertical and, or anything like that. So.
So I, I personally want to be very supportive of business in our community and development. But I'm also concerned about taking on an additional road because we're struggling with our road systems as it stands now. So that's just my concern.
Understood. Yeah. I, I think, I mean, just to speak to that a little bit, I think us getting it into the shape that we'll be delivering it alleviates some of that concern. And you know, the, there's, not to sound bad, but there's not a ton of traffic on that road because it's really not serving a lot. In other words, it's not a through street that gets traveled, you know, through that neighborhood plus some. So there's not a lot of traffic. In other words, it's site-specific traffic that typically would be using it. So.
Mr. Mayor, I have one quick question. Is there going to be a, to, another egress out of there to Highway 20? Do we even know that yet?
Yeah. So, so I, I don't know that officially yet, but just at a high-level glance, I don't think it would be to 20. It's probably would work something with the public streets on the neighborhood directly south of the assisted living facility. Because there's a, I can't remember the name of the street. There's a public street that sort of dead ends at one area there that's, that connects to what that 27 acres property is.
Okay. I know last, last council meeting, there was a question about the cost of the city and the city was going to come back with some information regarding that.
So this, if this is a, just a, the screen, I pulled up a map of the property. And as you can see, there's a, this, I believe it's Maple.
I think.
There's a street right here at the southwest corner that actually fronts on that 27 acres also. So that would be the, probably the only other street connection the property could have. The area along Highway 20, the topography of it is not well-suited for an extra connection to Highway 20. But as for costs, Public Works and I have talked it over. It's hard to estimate what costs will go into a street in the future. We're estimating the next, you know, you, you could be looking at maybe 20,000 to, to do a full chip seal of that street in today's dollars. So, but that's, that, if, if it's slurry coated and chip and crack sealed now before the city takes it on, there's quite a bit of life that we'd have before it would get to that point. That's balanced out also by the amount of system development charges and, and and added value of property taxes that would be brought in with, with the land, especially if it's developed. There's 27 acres there, even if, even if a smaller portion of it is developable, even if only half of that is developable, that's still quite a few units that can go in there. And a significant amount of system development charges for our transportation system that those units would also be paying much, much higher than, and than the expected costs over the next 20 years.
I know there was another question or clarification regarding sidewalks from the planning commission's proposal.
So the planning commission took a look at this and they were concerned about the, the lack of a sidewalk along the south side of, of Mountain Fur Street. Typically, when we have a developer come in and there is no development on a side, on one side of the street, we are open to doing development agreements where the, the developer commits to paying for that, putting in that sidewalk at a later time when development occurs. And so given the, right now that there's, the, the planning commission recommended full-on, the street should be, have, have sidewalk on the south side. That's their recommendation. Staff has, has basically said when development occurs on an extended portion of that street, the city could, typical practices that we've accepted agreements to do that at a later time. But that of course is, is up to you as the governing body to make a determination of whether to accept the planning commission's recommendation or to allow a, a development agreement to govern that where it would not be built until construction of additional development.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would really hate to have you spend the money when it's going to be, we don't know. You're absolutely right. We don't know what's going to be with the economy here in the next two years or one year. So it would be, for me, it would be, it would be difficult for me to say, we want you to put that in today rather than a year from now or whatever. I, I would like to see one there, but I don't know that we necessarily need one. We've got one on the north side. So I, I don't know if I have a real, I don't know. I just don't think it would be necessary now, especially if the, 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 the thing that they, we ask for is if you do that, we, you pull one in.
Yeah.
Now, we could probably change that at the end, you know, and, and not put that money out of your pocket, but.
Right.
Yeah. I would hate to see, you gotta do it tomorrow.
Yeah. And, and I, I would agree with that. Obviously there's the monetary piece of it. The other thing is, you know, we, I think we kind of just innately have a hard time building a sidewalk to nowhere. You know, because, you know, you put it in, then you're maintaining something that, that doesn't get used. And that, I don't know how familiar you are with that street, but it's, it's literally on, on the backyard of other people. And, and I think if I were living in those homes, I would prefer not to have it there. Because why do I want people walking right next to my backyard fence if I can, if I'd rather have, if it's easier for them to be across the street? So that's our general stance.
Any other questions or counselors? Need a council directive.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion for option two.
Motion in a second. My roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
I recuse myself.
Thank you. Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman. Yes. And thank you, Jeremy, for being here to answer all those questions.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you. We're, you know, we're here and we're doing well and we like it. So we want to keep moving. So we appreciate your time and we like being a part of the community. Thank you.
So for the record, we show six ayes, no nays, with one abstention, approval of the Mountain Fur Right-of-Way dedication. Next up is RCA Rio Theater OLCC liquor license application.
That's me. As you are aware, last time I presented the RCA for the Rio Theater applying for a liquor license, I kind of gave a overview of the investigation that we had. However, council had some more questions regarding that. And so I also invited the bayhams here to answer any questions that you might have this evening. Specifically, the questions were kind of centered around, will alcohol just be allowed in the Roxy portion of the theater or all of the theater? Maximum number of drinks and some details pertaining to that and also what kind of security. So as far as alcohol sales, it will be throughout the whole theater. There is going to be a maximum drink, drink limit. So that's two drinks max, whether it's beer or wine or mixed drinks. For those who purchase drinks, they're going to be wearing wrist brands. The drinks are going to be in a different kind of cup and like soda and pop. And they have indicated that there will be a cutoff time of selling alcohol, which will be one hour prior to the show ending. And then as far as security is concerned, they have a total of, I believe, eight cameras within their theaters that can monitor any kind of activity. And so those, those are the updated details that I have and would be happy to answer any further questions as well as the bayhams.
At this time, I'll open up for council questions.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself due to personal reasons.
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for all that update because those were the concerns that I had about it. And I appreciate knowing that so much safety is going into this. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I mean, I'm all for it. So just let you guys know.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to say, for me, I'm sorry that this has been delayed by another two weeks. It looks like you've applied in March and the OLCC must have approved something in June, maybe July, the 12th. And now we have done a little bit of government overreach and drug our feet on this for two more weeks. And I'm very sorry that you guys have had to come in here and wait to have more money coming into your business when you've been struggling. So I just want to make a motion to approve the liquor license.
Mr. Mayor, I got it. Is, are you going to be running that or is your wife going to be running it? Because that concerns me if it's one or the other. Okay. I think that's, nevermind. Thank you. I'm okay for this, by the way. Any other questions to council?
So it may not be popular, but I feel that there's a big difference between sitting down with your family and having a little alcohol in a restaurant than, and an environment where the lights are off, a movie's on, lots of children are there. It's the same reason, and, and we're talking hard alcohol here from my understanding of this is what's being requested. It's the same reason we don't let children into bars. And so I, I'm not in favor of doing this at this time. I know that that will not be popular. I know that there's a lot of people that'd like to have a glass of wine. The original request was for hard alcohol and not for a bottle of beer or a glass of wine. And so I have concerns about that that I don't feel have been addressed. So.
So, Mr. Mayor, is this where I can say, can I call for the question? Because there's a motion and a second on the table.
There was a motion and a second, but the questions were not done yet. There was some questions. I understand you felt it was a government overreach, but on the same token, we had counselors that had some possessions and some concerns. So in fairness to the counselors, they needed to hear those. So she has explained to you exactly what those concerns were. So at this time, I will entertain the motion in a second and we'll do it by roll call, please.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
No.
Counselor Coleman. Recuse myself. Thank you. Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Record show, we have five ayes, one no, and one abstention, approval of the liquor license. Next up is an RCA ODOT rail and public transit division agreement.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. And look, my mic is working now. So that's good. Um, so this is going to be for our grant that's actually going to be affecting our community center. And we have Don here in case there's any additional questions. This is a pass-through. This is a pass through grant through ODOT for the Dial-a-Bus program. And it's for the not to exceed 97,000. And it was from COVID grant funds. So are there any questions regarding this particular grants or this program in general?
Any questions or counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I have no questions. I just really like the opportunity that Dial-a-Bus provides to our community and I'm grateful that for your work on this, Don. So thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I was thinking the same thing. And the fact that the budget has increased is a is a positive step for Sweet Home.
Thank you, Don. If not any further questions, any council directive?
Still moved as recommended.
Second by roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Record show seven eyes, no nays with approval of the RCA ODOT rail and public transit division agreement. No ordinance bills at this time. Reports are coming in. Nothing from mayor's report us other than I'd like to know what that that robot is. That'd be kind of interesting. I'm a city manager report.
So I don't have a lot to report besides that we are going to be going over the audit at the next council meeting. And I do just want to thank all of council for your very gracious welcome and for all of your background information and everything. I really appreciate it. And I also want to thank staff for all of their hard work and their patience and everything along those lines as well. And very excited to hopefully be closing on my house this week and Sweet Home will be my home. So thank you all.
Department directors reports. Want to be brought up?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to thank Blair for giving us an update on all the development going on. I think it's good for us to know that's all going on. So thank you.
You know, department directors want to bring up? Okay. City attorney. Council business good to order?
Mr. Mayor, I want to make an announcement that on November 9th is a Wednesday from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. We are going to be meeting in the Jim Ricks Community Center to meet all of our new leaders in this community. So we have invited, of course, the city manager, the new school superintendent, the new interim police chief, fire chief, chamber executive and senior center executive director to be there. And it's open to the community, be watching for flyers and other updates as they come out. Thanks. I should say this is hosted by the Sweet Home Community Foundation.
There's nothing further?
Mr. Mayor, there was something further. Can I say something? Okay, so I had been working last week in the city of Sweet Home on Highway 20. And I just want to state my concerns about the traffic speed. It was very frightening for me to be inside of the work zone, watching the people on the ground be nervous. I sadly even saw commercial vehicles going faster than what they should have been. And so at one time during that week, I saw an officer parked by the Dollar Tree and the speed was greatly reduced. So I know that the construction is going to be going on until possibly April, maybe longer. And I just don't know if it's a possibility to have officers out there to maybe put a little bit of a brake on the throttle that people are on.
Yeah, I will duly noted. I have a meeting tomorrow with my sergeants and I plan on addressing that concern and coming up with some kind of a plan to deal with that because I've noticed the same thing in in those zones as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm not sure. When I was employed, we had to do the 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 things that you put down so you can, you know, how far away it is and how many how many of the things you have to out there and how, you know. And I'm not sure that ODOT or ODOT is making them do that. Because sometimes you might be 50, 60 feet away from where the thing is. And I think it has to be a lot farther than that. I know it is when we had to do that. You have to put the proper signs out, which they do some of those, but those signs have to be farther than they are. And I think somebody researched that to to make sure that they're doing that in the the right process. Because I can tell you, ODOT in our our gal that did our our deals for our business at the phone company, she came in and said that they're the worst ones that are that violate the rules. If you go on the freeway and they've got a road shut down, those things, those they're they're 150 feet with the cones. And and they're tapered. Right? There's a there's a way to do that. But anyway, I'd like to have somebody look at that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there's a traffic safety plan that the contractor bids on with ODOT. And I'm not quite sure the traffic safety plan, but there are certain requirements. I will tell you, I jumped between location multiple times throughout the day because they were running into issues that they could not get done at that time. So we went to a different location. I'm not quite sure how much signage or how many people or how that all works out, but we're jumping all over the place. So it's pretty difficult to try to set up traffic plans on the fly. So.
And there's so many of them.
They do use manuals. And cone and signage distances are based on the speed of the work zone. So if you're out on a highway and it's 55, obviously those distances are going to be bigger. You drop down to 35 and then those distances increase in the 25 miles an hour zone. They would be a little bit tighter. Now, there's probably no doubt that they're not exactly right. But know that those distances change based on speed of the work zone.
I I have one more question off off the subject on the wastewater plant. Up to you, Greg. So first of all, thanks for the report. I appreciate that. I read the issues for the month of August. I want to know if the issues for the month of September have improved.
Yeah, the plant's been in compliance. It has gotten the bug life back to wherever we kind of need to do adequate treatment. We've had a good month and I look forward to having more good months. And as you see, the odors have gone. We are working with a consultant. We're also looking at other things and how to operate this plan in the next three years. While we construct it, it's going to be extremely difficult, especially the sledge handling area. So there may be more discussions down the road, but plant's doing well right now. We're keeping DQ informed of everything that's going on. We've actually implemented every recommendation that they gave us because we like recommendations. And so far, we're doing okay. But I I know we have a lot of oversight with DQ right now. So we're hitting the checkboxes.
No question, Greg, just the traffic crosswalks and signals. Do you have a timeline on when they look like that? Those can be done?
I don't have a timeline. I think they're all part of that same project now. It looks like from what I understand with the 22nd Avenue that somebody they put the the post up and that got hit or something happened. And so I know there they had to reorder some more equipment. I don't know what that date is for that completion. Overall project again is April, but I would imagine where they're at with that, that concrete's already poured. They've already done some other things that would probably be wrapped up sooner than later. I'm not sure about the one that's right out here. It looks like that's a little bit further behind. Maybe I can get you those answers. We can. We can reach out to ODOT, their construction manager and find out exactly for those particular items.
One thing to keep in mind.
Yeah, they're all moving, but they're not done. And I don't know what the procurement or they're waiting on other types of things to finish them. And so I don't know what that delay is.
One of the things that makes it awkward is that the the 22nd Avenue crossing is under the ramp project. Whereas the other pedestrian crossings are under our sidewalk project that has been in the works for quite a while, and they just both happen to be constructing at the same time. And so the ramp project, I believe, April was the date that they were projecting to be done, which is probably going to be later because I understand there's some delays going on. The sidewalk project, I believe, has a has a later time, but I I don't have a firm date on when it was supposed to be completed.
One last question regarding ODOT thing is, is that asphalt ramp on first, is that a permanent? That's pretty tacky.
You an answer. It looks like they came back, filled it, and it's permanent. I don't I what I'm hearing is when they were going to pour that, there was no way based on the incline of that road that they could need ADA. They would have sent that person right out on the highway. So I don't know if they're changing, going to push everybody to the park side and let them cross at a different location. Because they're doing work right across from where you're talking at Clover Park where that little bit of spring water is. They've made an opening there. And that's kind of what I'm hearing is that everybody's going to be pushed over. And if it needs crossing, it's going to occur at one at First Avenue or right there at Clover Park.
So I mean, I would think if we can't get an adequate ramp there, we just take it out because I see that's going to affect the flow of the water there.
Didn't have anything before. So we can keep an eye on it. I think for the most part, most of it comes down on the other side that stays on the park side. We can request if things aren't right, we can come back and say, put in a drain. Right now, it's their work. It's not our work.
Well, I understand that. It's pretty tacky looking. That's.
Yeah, I mean.
It's worrying about the water flow, though.
Yeah, I I don't know what their intent is. They don't include us on stuff. We're not in any green. I just know I'm seeing the same thing that you guys are seeing.
Well, and, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I've been wanting to reach out to ODOT and I'd love to work with Director Springman and Director Larson on reaching out and hopefully we can come back with a better update, particularly talking about some of the safety concerns.
I I noticed that the way they've got the curbs going into the little ramps for people with wheelchairs and ADA, they don't look user friendly. I'd like to know if somebody in a wheelchair can actually navigate some of those little ramps, especially on 228. It doesn't seem very user friendly. It's like they're meeting the letter of the law, but they're not making it to where somebody can turn their chair just right to get in there. And the things are so high. It's just it. It doesn't seem very community friendly.
So if I may say one more thing about that, I was under the impression and heard that the attorney and the client that pushed this on to ODOT for these ramps are going and making sure that they meet what they need to meet is what I heard.
I have no further. Anything further for councilors? The council business good order? If not, we'll adjourn at 7:12.